Okay.
Tom, we have a forum.
Okay. Recognizing a forum, I'd like to call tonight's meeting of this Olean Planning Board in session. Could you read the role, please?
Ed McElfrush.
Here.
Craig Paulson.
Here.
Mary Fay.
Here.
JR Benyon.
Here.
Tom Barnes.
Yeah. And who else do we have with us?
We have Bob Clark. Tom Searle, and then, um, couple people for the applicant.
Yeah, the others that are on, with State Street Olean LLC are Tar Holdings LLC.
Okay. And could you identify yourselves, gentlemen? Or ladies and gentlemen?
Blake Tirana, President of CDT Enterprises, Tim Hortons.
Thank you.
Marty Wilson, Director of Finance for CDT Enterprises and Tar Holdings.
Okay, thank you.
This is Kevin Drosen with MS Consultants, Project Manager for this project.
Melissa Adaman with MS Consultants.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also here.
Okay.
Pat DiNardo from MS Consultants.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Pat DiNardo from MS Consultants.
Got that, Kathy? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's push on. The March 28th public hearing, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Oh, second.
It was JR and Craig.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's carried. The March 28th meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
Reed and Mary.
Okay, Reed and Mary. Any discussion, any revisions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's carried. More old business, State Street Olean LLC site plan, oh two dash twenty-two at twenty-seven, twenty-seven West State Street. Carrie, why don't you talk about your proposal for this revision?
Sure. Back on March 31st, I received correspondence from Casey Birch, who, as you may recall, is the Project Manager for Solely Engineering. They worked on behalf of State Street Olean LLC. And he made a formal request, and it was regarding that crosswalk that was discussed. I do believe I had included planning board members in on this email. So it's generally just, at this point, I do believe some sort of housekeeping issue for the planning board to revise its approval with the condition, the original condition was that the pedestrian walkway located in the parking lot shall be reconfigured from angled to perpendicular. There was some different discussion during that. So he also provided another variation to connect the crosswalk on the medical clinic side. However, I'm suggesting that we really just revert back to the original site plan that was submitted that the applicant really wanted in the first place.
Discussion from board?
I think Carrie's proposal is reasonable.
I do too. I would rather see that than go to make the change that they've done now.
I agree.
I'm good.
Okay. Well, I'd entertain a motion to revert back to the crosswalk as originally contained in the site plan.
Most.
Second.
Second.
It was JR and Reed.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's carried. Are we good on that project now?
Yes, I will get that, or we'll file that in the city clerk's office, and then we'll formally, you know, give it to code enforcement so they're aware, our same process, and then we'll get that revision out to the applicant for their record.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's push on. New business, Tar Holdings LLC site plan, oh three dash twenty-two, fourteen oh one, East State Street. Like to ask the applicant if you'd like to present to us what you're planning on doing.
If I can do that.
Let me know when you can see my screen.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so this is the property at the corner of North Clark Street and East State Street. The proposed building is a sixteen hundred square foot building, and we will be providing a double drive-through. The restaurant will also have interior seating. We'll have one entrance off of North Clark Street, one entrance off of East State Street, with a bypass lane around the drive-through lanes so that folks can bypass around the line, or if they want to exit out this way, once they pick up their food, they can come back around and leave this way.
Both entrances are entrance egress.
Correct, yep, both are twenty-four foot wide entrance and egress.
Can you comment on the the dual drive-through lanes, are you gonna have like two stations for ordering, is that, is that the function of the two drive-through lanes?
That is correct, yeah, there are two menu boards that will be positioned just north of the building here, so the single stack will start back on, in the rear and to the east of the building if you have, you know, during peak conditions, a lot of customers waiting in line. So once they get to this point and they can split off, the menu boards will be both served at the same time and alternate alternate customers so that once the one customer orders their food, they can merge in zipper style into this single pickup window line.
Does Tim Hortons have any experience with this dual dual drive-through lane thing, I mean, where they, where they merge back together, is that, does that typically work smoothly, or is that an issue?
It does work. I know not only for Tim Hortons, but other, other restaurants as well. Blake, I don't know if you want to speak to any of your other stores if you have this in current operation?
So this will be the first one that we, well, we're building a store in Jamestown right now with a double drive-through as well. But we've been to several that Tim Hortons has done, Tim Hortons has done this for about six or seven years now. Basically, we put a camera right up at the monitors there, and there's what's called a crash line, and the people taking the orders will push the order when the one car comes through. Along with Tim Hortons, other of our, you know, other quick server restaurants that we compete against have been using this for years. It's a lot better of a design for double drive-through lanes where, you know, you gotta wrap cars around both sides of the building. This is just the best option we have.
Right. I also had a question. If you're coming in off off from Clark Street, are you gonna have pavement markings or any signage that says right turn only? So that you don't have people turning left?
I do not believe we have those signs now, we do have the pavement marking arrows which will direct them this way around the building. But that is something that we can consider.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the drawing, so I thought it, it minimum may you know, an angled arrow on the pavement that said, you know, right only or something like that, you know, would be useful in terms of forestalling any collisions with somebody coming around the bypass lane from the north. So. Okay.
Put that down.
I interrupted your presentation, so please continue.
It's okay. I think that's basically it for the site plan, we will be putting the building right on the fifty-foot building setback and providing patio seating out here as well. So that's the only other thing I wanted to mention regarding the site plan.
Can you show us where your signage and any pole lighting would be, or building lighting?
Building lighting? Oh, for the, the site? Yes, we've got a photometric plan. So there will be five sight lights. I've seen in blue there, and they will provide the lighting for the entirety of the site. And then, Melissa, can you speak to any of the lighting on the building? I know there's a light strip that is attached.
There's a LED light band that'll go around the building, and Kevin, I realize I sent you the wrong link, I can share my screen for a photo if that would help. As well, as well as a couple of sconces along the drive-through side.
You know, what I'm primarily focused on is downward shielding for all the lights, whether they're pole lighting or sconces.
There are sconces on the, on the face of it.
We just don't want them shining upwards, that's all.
Okay.
And the pole lighting as well.
Okay.
While Melissa is pulling that up, I did want to mention too that the sidewalks along the frontages will also be replaced as part of this project. That was something at our pre-op meeting that was mentioned, the sidewalks are in pretty bad shape, so we would just be that's rehabbing them.
It's on East State or on Clark Street?
On both.
On both. And I couldn't see because the drawing that I have is, is pretty small, but there's a on either side of the Clark Street entrance, there's, there's sort of a bump out there for the sidewalk, what's going on there? Or actually, it's on the north side of the ingress egress on Clark Street.
That's where the existing bus shelter is, so that would just be mimicking the existing sidewalk.
Yeah, it's a bus shelter, alright.
Tom, I can explain that, when I did it, I'm actually the one that installed that. I had to do the sidewalks like that, given the grade, so it would be ADA accessible and compliant.
I see. Okay.
I'm having issues trying to share my screen.
Well, again, my only real issue is here you go.
Thank you, yes, so you can see the sconces there on the drive-through on the front, you said they cannot shine up?
Well, I don't think that those are particularly obnoxious.
Okay, and then if you see that light band running along the front, it continues on that right-hand side just a little bit to the other door. But that, that is your building accent lighting.
Personally, that would be acceptable, is there any issues with the other members of the board with that lighting?
No, it's fine, on the code enforcement letter, it said there are thirteen lights, so are there thirteen sconces?
I'll have to go back and double check that for sure.
It says can be found on sheet eight-five, but I can't find eight-five. Unless I'm not, can't figure out what I'm looking at.
Eight-five are the exterior elevations.
I think the lighting is demonstrated here is very attractive.
Oh yeah, and he's, I think what he's probably referencing, I agree with you, Reed. But this is accent lighting on the building, and if you're talking about the elevation drawing, then that's what he's looking at, isn't it, Melissa?
Correct.
So I think he's just counting up your
Yeah.
accent features.
Yeah, across the other side too.
Right.
It's nice looking, doesn't look obnoxious.
Yeah, looks good.
Couldn't tell where the pole lighting was from the drawings either, so that's, it's useful to know that they're gonna be downward pointing as well. And I guess code enforcement has signed off on the on the stormwater connections connecting to the city system. Could you go back and show us where those hedge basins are and where the connection to the city's system is? Because there is some language in there somewhere that says that stormwater will go out onto State Street and, and Clark Street, but also be connected to the city system, so. There are three basins I'm seeing there.
Yes, Thomas, there are four, five, I'm seeing five on this plan, there's the three area inlets, well, actually six, I'm seeing six, so we've got the three that are within the paving areas. We've got, we've got one that will sit in the landscape yard area and two curb inlets. And then that outfall.
Where are the curb inlets, right?
This one here on the exiting side, and then here just on the north of that entrance.
Okay, now, where do they all connect to, they all connect to?
And they would all connect to the existing inlet at the, at the intersection.
Okay. And Carrie, has DPW signed off on this or just code yet?
It's code so far, the entire package has been referred to the divisions in DPW, so we will have all those sign-offs by the next meeting.
Okay.
And if, if not, I'll relay it ahead of time to everyone if they want any changes.
Yeah. Well, personally, those are all my questions. Anyone else?
Are there restrictions in right or left turns coming out either egress?
There are not.
Just kind of concerned on East State, not so much on Clark.
If there's a concern, wouldn't DPW's team advise us for that next week, in two weeks?
Yeah, you've already been to DOT and they have no no issues with the connection on to four seventeen, which is a state route through there. I, I, I would have thought that if they had any problems with your left, left turns out onto four seventeen, they would have mentioned that, but, you know, in the past, we've on several other projects on East, East State, notably the Dunkin' Donuts and the Napoli Pizza, we've we've, we've conditioned the projects on no left turns, but, and, and, you know, one might think that this might be even a greater incidence of potential issues because when you're getting on the outskirts of town there, I think that you're seeing vehicles traveling at a higher velocity. You know, when I, I talked with Carrie about this a week or so ago, or several days ago anyway, and, you know, I expressed my concern about that, but I've, I've done a little thinking on this since then, and my sense is that really that's only an you know, a major issue at, at the, at the peak times for traffic leaving Olean, you know, like, for example, when the manufacturing plants let out, etc., you know, those kind of things, most of the time, there, I don't think that there would be much of an issue with left turns, I mean, right next door, there's the Hibernians, and, you know, I've never heard of there being an issue there with those folks. Their, their customers turning left out of there, so I, I think it's manageable, and I, I think that, you know, the applicant has made provision for dealing with that by allowing folks to drive around the bypass lane and exit out on the Clark Street if that becomes an issue, so. You know, Mary, I, I get your point, but my thinking on it has kind of changed since I spoke to Carrie a little bit, I think it's, there's less of a of a reason for us to be considering a left turn out only, but, again, you know, if that's something the board wants to go to, I, I'd be happy to to discuss that, consider it.
And Thomas, just to clarify too, the DOT did defer to the city for this approval, they said they did not have the jurisdiction here.
Mary, what, what are your thoughts?
I'm okay, I really think it'll work out, especially based on off-peak hours, to not limit them, I mean, their neighbor, like you said, the Hibernians are able to do it, I really think it'll be okay, and especially because they gave the other option for Clark Street, so those that are uncomfortable or can't do it, they really have that other option, and then they can hit the light and go.
Thanks, Carrie, but I was actually asking Mary who brought that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said Carrie.
That's okay, yeah, I, that's fine, you're right, there's a bypass lane if they're frustrated enough to come back around. So I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I would assume that if there there's a high incidence of accidents coming out of there, then eventually, you know, the owner would probably consider putting a no-left turn kind of sign there, you know. I wouldn't condition it myself on that. Any other issues or concerns or questions about the project? Okay, our for the applicant, our our traditional approach to this is we'll undertake the secret review, and I, Carrie, is there any reason why we shouldn't do an uncoordinated review here on this?
There's no reason.
Okay, so we'll do an uncoordinated review tonight. We'll certify a complete application, set a public hearing date probably for two weeks from tonight, and then we'll reconvene in two weeks, we'll have the public hearing. And assuming that there are no major issues that crop up between now and then, you know, I don't think that there's any reason to send this to county planning, is there?
I didn't, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, so the only real issues that would come up would be if there was something that came out of, out of the city departments. So if nothing major comes out of those folks, then we could actually reach on this in two weeks from tonight. The applicant, is there any questions about the process before we move into it?
The only question I had was, are we to expect comments from the board or from reviewers before that public hearing?
We're making our comments to you right now, I mean, if there are comments from the department, I'm, I'm sure that the that Carrie, that you'll, you'll share them with the applicant before the next meeting, right?
I absolutely will.
Okay, and Carrie, those will come in written format?
They will, yep, Kevin, I'll, I will end up emailing it to you, your entire team, and to the planning board. And our city departments that may have an issue, although I don't think we really see that to be a likely case.
And then the revised plans, they need to be in before that meeting?
Yeah, it would be dependent upon the day we receive it and the turnaround. You know, I'll follow up with DPW tomorrow to see about where they're at in the review process, and I'll try to get it to you right away.
Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, chances are, we, we won't have any issues that would require a revision of the plans that you've already submitted. So we could be good just with what you submitted here.
Yeah, Kevin, when you worked with Ryan and me, we, we did a lot of that legwork already, so that issues don't arise in the next two weeks.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, let's press on then. I would entertain a motion to declare the planning board to be lead agency for an uncoordinated secret review.
Motion.
Second, please.
Mary and JR.
Okay, thank you, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's carried. Okay, Carrie, you want to walk us through the short form?
Sure, the action is only in Tim Hortons at fourteen oh one East State Street, and it's for the installation of a Tim Hortons restaurant or related infrastructure at the above location, which is currently an existing vacant lot, then has the applicant sponsor information, which is Tar Holdings out of Jamestown. The first part, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance administrative rule of regulation? That's checked yes. Two, does the proposed action require a permit, approval, or funding from any other government agency? That's marked no. Three, total acreage of the site proposed, one acre, acreage to be physically disturbed is point nine, and the total acreage owned and controlled by the applicant or sponsor is one acre. All the land uses that occur on or joining or near the proposed action has been checked as urban, industrial, and commercial.
Would add residential to that.
Will do.
Residences on Clark Street.
Noted that change. Number five is the proposed action, A, of permitted use under the zoning regulations, that's marked yes. B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, that's marked NA.
That could probably be marked yes.
I'll note that change. Six, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? That's marked yes. Seven is the site of the proposed action located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? That's marked no. Eight, A, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? That's marked yes.
I, I, I'm curious why that's marked yes. It seems like the, the project is pretty much dependent on existing traffic volume, so I, I'm not certain if it's gonna attract a, a significant amount of additional traffic to it.
Tom, I would agree with that, I don't think it's gonna be a substantial increase, A, especially on that corner of East State. I could mark it no, can I just have a consensus with members to make that change?
I agree with that, I think people that are closer into the city are gonna go uptown instead of there, that go to the Wayne Street location. If they're headed out toward Porterville, Western Mills, they'll go there, back and forth, or the East End, they'll head there, but not a lot more than what's there.
JR.
Yeah.
Mary, are you okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Eight, B, are public transportation services available at or near the, or near the site of the proposed action? That's marked yes. Eight, C, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? That's marked yes. Nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? That's marked yes. Ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? That's marked yes. Eleven, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? That's marked yes. Twelve, A, does the site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of Office of Parks, Rock, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for a listing on the State Register of Historic Places? That's marked no. Twelve, B, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site inventory? That's marked no.
That'd be yes.
Yes. I'll note, grades change, twelve, B, to yes. Thirteen, A, and I just want to note for the applicants, Thirteen A, and and I just want to note, um, for the applicants, um, the entire city of Olliam is considered um arche- archaeologically sensitive. So a thirteen A, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? That's marked no. Thirteen B, will the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? That's marked no. Fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found at the project site. Check all that apply. Urban was marked.
Also, suburban.
Note that change. Fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain a species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or in danger? That's marked no. See attached narrative. And the narrative does um, no, it appears the site will not have any environmental impact on any endangered threat and rare or species of special concerns, since the site does not have any stream features. All the species listed, when checked, were aquatic long-headed darter, wavy-eyed lamp mussel, blue-breasted darter, black red horse, and streamlined club. The applicant will take all necessary required erosion control measures to ensure protection of neighboring lots, roads, and environments.
That's a, you know, thi- this is very similar to pretty much every project we see has the same sort of situation. And uh, we recognize that uh, most of these aquatic species uh are not present on most sites, even though the uh the EC mapper w- will show them to be present in in this area. Um, but we normally uh recognize that that this is the case by answering this question, yes. But then making a note that um in our minutes that that these are aquatic species and they're not present um on the site. So that's what I would suggest.
I will note that change.
That would be consistent with past practice for us.
Agreed. Uh, sixteen is the project site located in the one hundred year flood plain. That's uh marked no. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? That's marked yes. Will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties? That's marked no. Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems? That's marked yes. Uh, the description is stormwater from the site will follow existing drainage patterns and flow onto North Clark and East State Streets. The runoff generated from the site will be conveyed via piping to the existing storm network located in the intersection of East State Street and North Clark Street. Eighteen, uh, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that were result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? That's marked no. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? That's marked no. Twenty, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazard hazardous waste? That's marked no.
Very good. Anybody have any issues with any of that?
No.
Okay, let's move to part two. Notice that Carrie has completed this and indicated uh no or small impact might occur for all eleven questions. Give you a moment here to to scan down through those and see if you have any uh uh reason to change that to moderate or large.
No, I'm good.
Everybody okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um let's move to part three then. Uh, based on our review, um I would entertain a motion to make a finding that the project will pose no significant adverse environmental impact. And accordingly, to authorize the issuance of a negative declaration on the project.
Don't move.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, reading seconded Craig and Mary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's carried. Carrie, will you sign my name and initial it for me?
Yes.
Okay, um, before we move on, um, I wanted to make one comment or question. Ad- admittedly, my knowledge of this parcel is uh based on circumstances that were that were the case back when the tile plant across the street was actually a a functioning business, which it has has not been for for many years now. But if if you look at the uh north of the site, as you go up Clark Street, you hit the railroad tracks there, there is a rail siding there. And uh, the tile plant used to bring in material and offload it at that siding. And uh the material um for for these tiles would be uh taken down to an underground conveyor system that actually went underground from that. You you'll see that that building there at the siding. It actually would go underneath the site where you're thinking about building this Tim Hortons and across four seventeen and into the tile plant. So I I don't know if that conveyor system is still underground or if there is uh, if it's been removed and there's just a uh, an an empty tunnel down there, or if there, if it's all been filled and compacted. But I I just wanted to bring that up for the applicant so that you would know that that I do have uh you know, that 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 historically, that was the case, that that was there uh because that might impact some of the work that you need to do in terms of uh foundations and uh uh compacting the ground for uh uh for paving, et cetera, et cetera.
Hey, Tom, I can actually answer that.
Okay.
I followed up uh based on our conversation from, I believe it was last week. So Code Enforcement Officer Reed um is familiar with the project manager of the site. He reached out to him. I will be getting the plans for that and provide it to the applicant. Uh, we're supposed to be receiving them tomorrow. From our understanding, what's left is a twelve-inch pipe that's underground at a depth of five feet.
Like, cause I I was under the impression that it was a an actual conveyor system.
Yep, um, we were too, and whoever that individual is um said this is what's there on site.
Oh, that's that's interesting. That's that's different from what my understanding was. But if if that's what it is, then that's what it is.
Yeah, so we'll um try to get that confirmation tomorrow, and Ryan will be sending that out for uh the plans that that individual had.
Great. Okay, so uh, anyway, I just wanted the applicant to be aware of that in case you were not, you know, that sometimes uh I mean, the the tile plant's gone through um a different owner. So it's it's not, it wasn't clear to me just exactly what the knowledge base was about this historical uses. So I just wanted to pass along what I recall from uh from some history. So.
Oh, and you know, the other thing, so they really went as far, like, uh, the assessor got involved. Um, they dug through any permitting, anything that was deeded, um, any types of descriptions. So um, it was all hands on deck today. So they weren't able to find anything else. However, um, any information we can get, we will absolutely forward on to the board and to the applicant and their uh consulting team.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any any questions about that from the applicant? Okay, uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion from the board to uh make finding that we have a complete application.
Second.
JR and Reed.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. That's carried. Okay, uh now it's time to set a public hearing for you folks and the applicant. Uh, representing the applicant, we would do that uh two weeks from tonight, which is June twenty seventh at six thirty PM. Does that work for you go you folks?
Yes.
Okay, June twenty seven, six thirty PM. Okay, uh, is there a motion to set the public hearing for that date and time?
Motion.
Second.
In seconded Mary and Craig. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. That's Carrie. So uh Carrie will be back in touch with you folks uh with the additional information we've discussed tonight. Um, comments from the department and anything that we hear about that underground system. And uh, we will see you in two weeks. Okay.
Hey, uh, Tom, I also want to know on Wednesday morning, uh Cathy and Monroe will be emailing to Kevin and Melissa the public hearing packet. And that will be the notice that you'll be sending to the uh nearby property owners with the list that is prepared by the city assessor's office with the radius. And those will need to be postmarked as regular USPS by Friday. And then there will be a certification form that you just fill out and return to us uh prior to that public hearing. There will also be a memorandum that explains um all this in a greater detail. But if you have any questions, you can reach out directly to Cathy or me uh, once you receive that package.
Thanks, Derek.
Sure.
Uh, I would just ask, please, please keep Nikki Fuentes from our office um involved in that coordination as well.
Well done.
Okay. I I guess that's it for uh the tire project, the uh project. Any uh to move on in our agenda? Miscellaneous in communications, anything?
Uh, Kathy has sent out some training opportunities. Um, I do believe we heard back from Tom. We're gonna add in the cell tower um information. Um, and if no one has any other uh suggestion from that DICOM training, then she will purchase that and get the codes out.
There's also that uh memo on the annuals uh harassment training that needs to be complied with as well.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next meeting date? June twenty seventh. Any other business?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
JR and Reed.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, that's carried. Thank you all very much.
Have a great night.
You.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.